I'm going to call to order the city council meeting, April 11th, 2023, 6:00 PM. Invocation will be given by Pastor Larry Powell of Embassy Christian Ministries, led by the Pledge of Allegiance of Texas, led by Councilmember Haney. Any of those wish to join us in a moment of prayer and invocation can do so by standing up voluntarily. Pastor Larry Powell, can you join us at the podium and lead this council and this city in prayer?
Thank you all. Thank you all very much. Let us go to our heavenly Father in prayer. Father, we just come to you in the name of our Lord. We just want to thank you for this day. Thank you for blessing us to come to this assembly and be advised, Father God, by your Spirit, which is the wisdom of God. We ask that wisdom, Father God, govern this atmosphere, govern and bless the people, these officers that's laying their life on the line for each and every one of us. We just loose wisdom and peace to them. We thank you, Father, for the food that you have provided for us, and we say, Father God, we're regarding this day and we're eating unto you. So we say amen and amen. Yes, Lord. Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, and the way it is ruled in Texas, one state, God, one indivisible.
Very proud to have our Department of Public Safety and Communications, these are our sons and heroes. And when you call, they answer. And today, we want to honor them, make them focal points, to show their appreciation for them. The city of Odessa proclaims, whereas in an emergency, our citizens attend on 911, and these dedicated men and women professionals who use public safety telecommunications to quickly respond to emergency calls. And whereas our dedicated telecommunicators are truly the first to respond to a citizen's call for help, who rely on their knowledge as they make critical decisions, obtain information, and quickly dispatch needed aid. And whereas professionals in public safety and telecommunication, this is the binding between the citizen or the victim, and the public safety provider may apprehend a criminal, save or possess, or save their possession from fire or save a lot. And with each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, I have been holding up a paper invested in me as a mayor of the wonderful city of Odessa, Texas, who hereby proclaim April 10th through 15th. Your honor, we are going to enter with National Public Safety Telecommunications. So throughout the city, and inside this city hall pit pool of that, I urge all citizens to extend your appreciation for their dedication and commitment to all of the citizens of Odessa. Just give them a round of applause.
I'm Ms. Robyn, I'm the Director of Communications. And Mrs. Letitia, she's our training coordinator. She's been dispatching for 12 years. I've been with the department 21 and a half years. Mrs. Darla Tillman, she's one of our dispatchers and supervisors, and she's been with the department almost eight, almost eight. Mrs. Mohan Morris, she's one of our dispatchers, and she's been with us a year, almost a year, a rookie. And then this is, sorry, Monica Rodriguez, she's one of our dispatchers, and she's been with the department for three years. Back behind her is Keala Mason, and he's a dispatcher, and he's been with the department for four years. Then we have Samantha Ornellis. And she's been with the department how long? One year. And then we have Karen Thompson, and you've been with the, sorry, I don't know what you're saying, Karen Thurman, and you've been with the department how long? I want to say your, so there's a variety of experience, but they're all awesome, dealing with the public. And you have a face and a name to some of the, if you have to call to the boys that you hear.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I mean, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of its agenda items before or during the consideration of said item. Any citizen wishing to comment on non-agenda items can do so by filling out a card. You have three minutes to be able to comment on non-agenda items. I will remind the council that this is a non-agenda item, so you cannot respond, but we can direct staff, if we need to, to be able to answer or coordinate any information of any citizen on a non-agenda item. Anyone wishing to do so can come forward, and they can do so by coming forward to the podium, stating your full name. You can do so by doing that now. As we consider that, also I ask the council to overview, to view the consent agenda as presented on item five, and I'll entertain a motion for approval. I have a motion by Councilmember Vasquez, second by Councilmember Mata. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Consent agenda is accepted as presented. We're going to move on to other items, public hearing, item seven. Open a public hearing to consider approval of the request by Claudio Rodriguez, owner of the specific use permit to allow workforce housing light industrial. This will be a presentation by Maria Preto. I think everyone has been presented with some items for amendment. Ms. Preto, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Lewis.
There you go.
Okay. Is that better?
That's a little bit better. Well, no, not just a little bit more.
Okay. How's that?
Perfect.
Okay. All right, and we sent notifications out to the surrounding property owners within 200 feet of the site. Four notices were sent, zero returns, zero protests, and zero approvals. The property involved in this request is located at 2135 East I-20 Service Road. A request for original zoning light industrial was presented to the city council and was approved on March 14, 2023. The site is occupied by industrial development and vacant land. Land use in the area consists of a church and light industrial development to the north, industrial development to the east and west, and vacant land and industrial development to the south. The applicant is Claudio Rodriguez's owner, and the purpose of this specific use permit request is to facilitate workforce housing on the property with existing industrial development. Proposed building area is approximately 1,336 square feet, and the total lot area is approximately five acres. A site plan has been submitted indicating building locations and other development standards, which include parking and fencing. If the council chooses to approve this request, the planning staff recommends adoption of the following conditions. Would you like me to go ahead and recite those?
Yes, please.
Okay. Also, there is an amendment to propose by the staff for conditions one through 10. As I read those, I'll go ahead and let you know about these amendments. Number one, access and parking to the site will need to be provided. Six vehicle parking spaces are required for the workforce housing, one paved parking per unit. And existing seven vehicle parking spaces for an existing industrial development are adequate. Required parking spaces need to be paved and have to measure nine by 18. Vehicles in an operable condition may not be stored on-site. Operation of a home occupation or home business by occupants of workforce housing shall not be allowed. Occupancy shall be limited to two persons per bedroom at the same time. Access to proposed workforce housing will be provided on West Interstate Highway 20. All portions of the buildings must be within 150 feet of an approved fire apparatus road. There must be a fire hydrant within 400 feet of buildings. All applicable building codes need to be met. Review of the permit upon receiving neighborhood complaints. This is a temporary permit, and the city council should have the right of termination for violation of the terms and conditions of the permit or because of the negative effect of the use of the neighborhood after a public hearing. As for the amendments, we request to modify condition five. Occupancy shall be limited to one person per bedroom at the same time. Add condition 11 to the workforce housing should be allowed from April 26, 2023, to June 30, 2026, which is the time of their lease.
Okay, so what happens after June 30?
Well, once their lease terminates, then they'll have to go ahead and renew the specific use permit, if they wish to.
Continue.
Continue, yes. The opinion of the planning staff is that the use of the site as employee workforce housing project is a reasonable use and will not conflict with the adjacent land uses. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved the request with conditions with a seven to zero vote at their March 16, 2023 commission meeting. And I'm here for any questions.
You may want to tell them that it was, it's supposed to be Lot 5, Block 24, and that we adjusted the ordinance today as it's a clerical error. So we're good to go. Yeah, just if you.
Yes, sir. We are adjusting the legal description to indicate Lot 5, Block 20, I'm sorry, Lot 24, Block 5.
Okay.
I'm sorry. And yes, West Interstate Industrial Site 3-41.
That has it on here. West Interstate Industrial Site 3-41, City of Odessa.
Yes, sir. So it's good to go. Tina, we amended the ordinance today, so it's good.
Okay. Real quick, let me ask a question. So this is an existing building?
There, yes, there is an existing industrial commercial building on the site. They are adding, as you can see, they are adding the workforce housing to the lower southeast area of the property. They will add also six vehicle parking spaces. There is only, according to the request that we recommended, as one of the conditions, we're recommending one vehicle space per unit, or per person living in the unit.
Are they going to be sharing, are they going to be sharing a commercial type of business and? Or is it just going to be living? Is it going to serve as a dual purpose, the whole, the whole, the whole?
Yes, they will be having, they will still continue to use the top building as an industrial work site. Although the top building, the industrial work site does have its own parking spaces.
So after the 30th, this permit will run, and then they'll have to make a determination whether they want to continue, they have to come back and start the process over?
Yes.
And so, as our Fire Marshal's have gone through, because it is being converted from an industrial to living quarters, are they compliant with the Fire Marshal's fire code?
We did send a notification or email requests for comments from the Fire Marshal's office. He did indicate that the conditions seven and eight. All portions of the building must be with 150 feet of an approved fire apparatus road, and then there must be a hydrant within 400 feet of the building.
Fire suppression. All right. Is that your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I can get council questions before I open this public hearing. This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to comment on item seven can do so by coming forward, stating your name and your, only your full name. You can do that by coming forward now. Seeing that nobody rushed to the podium to make a comment on this item, I will now open it up to questioning on the dais. Does anybody on the dais have any questions for me or anything in general on item seven? Seeing that there is no comment from the dais, I will entertain a motion to approve or disapprove on item seven.
Mayor, I move to approve item seven with the two modifications on the amendments, condition five and adding condition 11.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mata on item seven for approval with the conditions modifying condition five and condition 11. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Councilmember Thompson, all in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item seven with the modifications of five and 11 with.
Haney was your second.
No, it was Thompson. Thompson beat him.
I didn't hear him. I'm sorry.
He just wanted to make sure.
He can have it.
I watched it and I heard it. I got you. So, yeah, so your motion to Councilmember Mata, Councilman Thompson was second with Haney a close third. Let the minutes reflect. We're going to move on to item eight. Open a public hearing to consider approval of the original zoning request by Lico Incorporated, owner LLC agent for light commercial LC on proposed plot Yukon Ridge commercial first filing. Ms. Preto.
Thank you. Notifications were sent to the surrounding property owners within 200 feet of the site. Seven notices were sent, zero returns, zero protests, and zero written approvals. The applicant is Lico Incorporated owner, LLC agent, and the purpose of the original request is to allow light commercial development on the property. Using the city's identified priorities contained in the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan to evaluate zoning amendments, the following comments are offered. The proposed zoning is not contrary to established land uses in the general area or the land use plan of the City of Odessa's master plan. The proposed zoning will not have a negative impact on this site or surrounding properties. The proposed light commercial development would be, will not be out of line with development in the area. The proposed use would be an appropriate complementary use to the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed zoning district would be consistent with surrounding zoning districts in the area. And based upon the preceding analysis, staff has no objections to the request as presented. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved the request with a seven to zero vote at their March 16, 2023 commission meeting. And I'm here for any questions.
Council, any questions? Everybody knows where this is, right?
Yes.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to come forward and speak on this item can do so by coming forward, stating your full name and only your full name. You can do so by coming out. This is the most awkward 30 seconds, isn't it? Seeing that, once again, nobody fully rushed up here to the podium because they were eager to speak on this item. I will close the public hearing. Any final comments from the council? I will remind you that this is an 8.5 acre tract on Section 2, Block 42, Township 2, Texas Pacific Railroad Company Survey, City of Odessa, Ector County, Texas. This is also in the southwest east of Yukon Road and North Grandview Avenue. I will entertain a motion to approve or disapprove on item eight. I have a motion by Councilmember Swann. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Mata. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passing unanimously. We're going to move on to item nine. Consider amending the certain sections of the City of Odessa Personal Policies and Procedures Manual. First approval. Ms. Jones.
Mayor, this is simply a housekeeping matter. These policies were adopted, but they were never codified by the city council in the last couple of years. So I just want to bring them before you and basically get you to approve them so that we can put them in the form of an ordinance.
No, this is not it.
No, 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 this is, this is, this is in your packet. Of course, we have Section 4.202. That's the payday, payday policy for the personnel policies and procedure manual. And of course, we have the pandemic leave 5.105, and we have the illegal harassment 6.102, and 6.103 drug and alcohol policy. And of course, we have 6.103A, which is the drug and alcohol policy for the US Department of Transportation. And these were, these were adopted, but they were never codified. So that's why we're bringing them to you now.
When were they brought forward? When were they, when were they, were they adopted but not brought forward?
Last couple of years.
It was first 2019.
2019.
Yep. So we're looking at four years, yeah. And then on 4.202, January 1st, 2020, 5.105, June 15th, 2021. Let's see. We just go right on through here. October, 6.102 is October 1st, 2019. For some reason, they just were never codified as they should have been.
Is the codification done through your office?
Yes, yes, sir. It is. We did the ordinance and we bring it to you. So I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that we do what's right. Better late than never in my mind.
Good housekeeping.
So how many, how many items do we have?
Well, there's actually, there's five. There's five of them that have kind of fell through the cracks now. Mayor, of course, we are, we are also, we're getting the contract prepared for Mariachi, however you spell his name, management group that's going to do the personnel policy. So this is, this is really a Band-Aid, but it's a Band-Aid that's needed for the next couple of months. Otherwise, I wouldn't be bringing it to you.
That was going to be my next question.
That's why we got it. It's necessary.
It's necessary, even though we still have to go through that other procedure of bringing it up from 2008.
Yes.
That sounds about right. Okay, so.
This is, this is first approval.
This is first approval?
Yes, sir.
So we're going to need a motion, and I don't know who the brave soul is going to be, that's going to tackle this on?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so you're going to make a motion to approve item nine?
Yes.
With?
With the Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual, first approval. With the Section 4.202 payday of the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual shall be amended as shown by the attached Exhibit A. And Section 2, the Section 5 of the Personnel Policies and Procedure Manual shall be amended by the addition of subsequent 5.105 pandemic leave policy as shown by Exhibit B. Section 3, the Section 6.102 illegal harassment of the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual shall be amended as shown by the attached Exhibit C. Section 4, the Section 6.103 drug and alcohol policy of the Personnel Policies and Procedure Manual shall be amended as shown by the attached Exhibit D. Section 5, the Section 6 of the Personnel Policies and Procedure Manual shall be amended by the additional of the subsection 6.103A drug and alcohol policy by the US Department of Transportation, DOT, as shown by the attached Exhibit E. Section 6, that's, yeah, that's it.
And we're going to, just those five, and just those five are going to be, this is a Band-Aid. Just those five are going to be codified in this ordinance. And then when we get everything in from Mariachi, whatever his name is, then we'll, we'll do this all over again.
We'll revisit this decision issue. So we have a motion on item nine by Councilmember Swann with the five amendments as presented and read. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're going to move on to miscellaneous, item 10. Odessa Fire and Rescue Hazing Investigation Presentation of Findings by Mr. Tommy Sheen. Mr. Sheen, can you come forward? Mr. Sheen, just present your, just when you get back on the podium. You got something to pass around?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead and do that, and then just stick to your name for the record and your firm.
Thank you, sir.
Tommy, if you want to take a minute.
Sure.
Maybe we could sweep off longer. She's very good at computers.
Okay. Well, yes, if you don't mind.
You have a slide presentation?
Well, I just, I just have some, some information to show. Just for the record, Tommy Sheen, I'm here on behalf of Sheen Law Firm, and we conducted an investigation into some allegations having to do with the Odessa Fire and Rescue Department. Give me one second. We'll set up and then I'll get started.
Hope for the best.
There it is. All right. Before I get to this, Mayor and Council, this is a big deal, okay? I'm going to start out with that. What I'm bringing here today is an investigation into the investigation that was conducted by OFR in August of 2022, but there's much more to the story, okay? I'm working on a subsequent report to provide to you guys, having to do with some of the other issues that I've identified in this, in this investigation. But the, the main purpose for today is to explain what I've found with respect to the investigation that was conducted by OFR internally. There's been much, much talk, I think, around town and whatnot about the investigation of an investigation, of the cost and whatnot. And I'm here to tell you that it's, we're going to do this presentation, and with the information we've provided, I think it's worth your time, okay? So let me get started. All right. This, this is the main reason we're here. In February, in August of 2022, and we can go through these one at a time when we go back up. There we go. And these pictures are provided to the council in their packet that I provided. Tommy, I messed it up. Okay. But essentially, what you're looking at, and for the public, what you're looking at are the hands of Odessa Fire and Rescue cadets that were part of our Odessa Fire and Rescue program to train young cadets. I did an investigation and I talked to eight OFR cadets, Captain Norred, Captain Yokum, Captain Moody, Captain now Chief Chavez, HR Director Charles Hurst, and Chief Joey White. I would note to this council that, that the following individuals were asked to participate, but either declined or had legal counsel decline to participate in this investigation. That being five of the cadets who are no longer with the force, okay? Chief Marty Moya, whose attorney declined to participate in this investigation. Chief Sala Ortega, who did not show up at his allotted time. Ms. Natasha Brooks, whose attorney said she would not participate in this investigation. Chief John Alvarez, who did not show up at his allotted time, although we sent him certified letters. Former city manager Michael Marrero, who again did not show up at the allotted time and did not make otherwise arrangements with us to participate in this investigation. I think it's important, because I think there's some confusion about, about when this, when this happened, okay? This happened in August of 2022, beginning in August 16. At that time, the city government of the players, so to speak, that are involved in this whole thing consisted of the following. The city manager was Michael Marrero. The city attorney was Natasha Brooks. The HR manager was Charles Hurst. The head fire chief was John Alvarez. The training chief was Marty Moya. the chief, the, the head fire chief was John Alvarez, the training chief was Marty Moya, the assistant chief, uh, and, and assistant chief that did the investigation, the original OFR investigation, was Saul Ortega. And the training captains were, uh, Captain Chris Norred, Captain Will Moody, and captain, then Captain Chavez, okay? That's who this involves. Um, and it's important, I think, to, to let y'all know that this was obviously a previous council, this was a previous set of, of people. And what we're here today to discuss is not interim Chief Cotton or who's in, in, in charge today, but what rather happened in August of twenty twenty-two. So let's dive in. Essentially, in August, in August of twenty twenty-two, uh, let me back up. The cadet program was initially a setup by the City of Odessa as a retention tool, okay? Uh, obviously, uh, the City of Odessa has a, a public interest in retaining and training, uh, good first responders, uh, and, and then recruiting them and keeping them. Um, and so obviously, for those who don't know, um, the city set up a program where young men and women, um, who wanted to be a firefighter or an EMS uh, with the City of Odessa, could do so and get paid to do so while they, while they were completing their certification. We're talking about young men and young women that are cadets, that are not yet firefighters or EMTs, okay? So most of the people I interviewed that were, that were cadets, uh, ranged from twenty to twenty-eight years old. So they're, they're younger, they're younger folks, trying to get a start, okay? Uh, initially, when it was set up sometime, uh, in the early two thousands, uh, the, the original intent was, um, to bring these kids along and to kind of have a place for them to get certified and also maybe get some on-the-job training. Um, I'm sad to report that's not the status of affairs of the cadet program as it currently, or, well, as it existed in August of twenty twenty-two. Uh, what I was able to, to, to get from the cadets, um, was that essentially, um, they showed up and sat in a conference room or classroom there at, at the main fire station for most of the day, um, ma- mainly unsupervised, um, with, uh, orders to study for their certifications and their classwork. They had to do an hour or so of PT a day, uh, but that was at their own discretion, either first in the morning or right before they left to go home. Um, and then, um, otherwise, they were kind of, uh, treated as the, uh, as downtown or, or the main campuses, uh, janitors, or, uh, they, they were, they were forced to do bathroom duty and, and maybe clean some trucks and do this, that, and the other. Occasionally, they might be shown something that was pertinent to firefighting. But of the eight that spoke, they said that they, m- most of the days, their days were sitting in a classroom, and if they didn't have classwork, playing on their phone, or doing whatever, killing time, okay? So, um, the initial purpose, obviously, of the cadet program was to bring these kids along, get them into OFR, get them interested in the fire department, get them interested in EMT. That is not where we find it today. So the events that we're here about and the pictures that, that are up here, these are blisters of cadets' hands. These were gathered by several, several sources, the cadets themselves. And, and you might be wondering why the cadets aren't enlisted by name. Like I said, these are twenty to twenty-eight-year-old men. They came forward and were trying to protect their, you know, their integrity and their, and their safety. Um, so as you can see, um, several different individuals with, with pretty serious blisters on their hands. So how did this happen? On August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, these, these cadet, cadets reported to Captain Will Moody. Captain Will Moody was out of town. He had gone out on a business trip. Um, so he was left, by default, uh, they were left in charge by Captain, uh, Chris Norred, okay? Um, on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, um, it's of note to state that almost every cadet told me the same exact story for day one and day two of these events. So it stuck out in their minds. That, that, uh, that morning, Captain Norred, uh, went into the classroom where these, where these cadets were sitting and studying and doing whatnot. And he asked, he asked for volunteers for an OC event, uh, recruiting, I guess, event, uh, that, that had to do with, uh, first responders. Um, several of the kids raised their hands and said, we'd be willing to do it. Um, but then he indicated it was gonna be after hours, several of the hands went down, okay? And then he started asking some questions. You know, what time, what's the time commitment? Are we gonna get paid? Normal questions that, that people would ask. Um, and according to all the cadets, as a matter of fact, Captain Norred became extremely upset, and he left the room and he went over to, uh, Chief Moya's office, okay? After, after Chief Moya and Captain Norred had a discussion, according to the cadets again, uh, Chief Moya emerges into the room and instructs them all to get dressed in their physical training gear, and he takes them outside. And, um, even according to, uh, the captains that were there, um, had some choice words for those kids. Um, you, used, uh, pretty nasty language and told them that they weren't measuring up, okay? Um, and then he commenced, according to the cadets and to some of the captains that witnessed, to have, uh, the, the cadets do command push-ups. And command push-ups, I've described in this report, those are push-ups where they're a standard push-up, but when the chief says stop, you stop. And if you're halfway down, that's where you stop until he says go again. And then you get all the way down to the ground, and then you come back up, he says stop, you stop again. And you hold it as long as he wants you to hold it. And so they did approximately ten to, ten to twelve reps of that, after which they did my term, not my term, the, um, OFR's term, and it was used throughout all these deposit, uh, all these, uh, statements. Uh, they did an Indian run, okay? And what they called an Indian run was, uh, basically a, a straight line run where they're all running. You've all seen army movies where those guys are running in a straight line. Um, and the guy in the back runs to the front, and then, and then the next guy in the back runs to the front, and the next guy runs to the back and goes to the front. Um, and they did that for about a mile and a half, okay? Um, they gather them back up, he, he, uh, Chief Moya has some words for them and they're dismissed. Wouldn't you know that almost every, every one of the cadets showed up at that event? Um, and they all indicated to me it was because they were scared of retribution if they didn't, okay? So that's day one. The very next day, day two, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, um, the day starts with the cadets having to wash, uh, the vehicles there for the suppression crew, um, at, at Maine, okay? This wasn't terribly out of the nor- ordinary, but it wasn't, it wasn't ordinary. Um, typically, they were, you know, they, they were allowed to study in the morning, and, and if they needed to do some duties, they'd do them kind of in the afternoon. But first thing, they were jumped out and they were asked to wash the trucks. Right shortly before lunch, Captain Norred comes across, finds these, these cadets washing the trucks and asks, who wants to go on a run with me? Who wants to work out with me at UTPB? Five of the cadets figuring, hey, what happened yesterday, we're gonna go run with Captain Norred, 'cause we don't wanna get in trouble. So they do. And they go, and they go to UTPB and they do some wind sprints and they do, uh, some calisthenics. And when they finish up, as they're walking to the car, Captain Norred says, hey, turn around. And they all turn around, and he took a picture of them. And he sent these, this picture to Chief Moya. This is confirmed by Captain Norred himself, so this is not just the cadets. He sent these, this picture to, to the chief and said, these guys worked out with me today. They don't, you know, you can exempt them for what you're gonna do this afternoon. Well, by the time these cadets back, got back to Maine, um, they, uh, figured out what he was gonna do, because the rest of the cadets were dressed in PT gear, uh, and out on, and, and out on the front, uh, driveway of the Maine, uh, firehouse. Um, and according to multiple cadets, they were dressed out in PT, these five were exempt. Ca- uh, Chief Moya says, touch the ground. And they touched the ground. And they said, he says, is it hot? And they said, yes, it's hot. He says, good. So, and he says, get down at the end of this driveway. And he said, I want you to bear crawl to me. So he goes, starts at the street and they, they start bear crawling. The very first, very first lap up, um, the cadets indicated to me that their hands were starting to get red and starting to hurt. As you can see. So after the first, uh, round, dr- up the, up the driveway there, uh, one of, he, uh, according to one cadet, the chief asked him to see his hands. And he showed him his hands, they were already red. Uh, and he said that the chief looked away, which he took to mean keep going. So they went back to the back, to the, the, the base of the driveway and had to bear crawl back again. And you'll see some pictures in here of knuckles. That's because the, the, the cadets indicated to me that they were having to alternate between their knuckles and their hands that was hurting so bad, okay? And so he, several of the cadets can, finished the second. Then some of the cadets finished the third, and at some point, they're, they're rattling around in agony enough and making complaints enough to where the chief stops them. And then he has them, gathers them up, has them complete another Indian run, okay? After the Indian run is complete, he gathers the cadets up. They all gather up, and according to multiple cadets, who were all interviewed separately, the following, uh, interaction happened. He said, let me see your hands. They all put their hands out. He said, good, now it looks like you've been working. And then he dismissed them. That, that story was told verbatim by eight cadets. The, where it starts to differ is in day three and day four, okay? Day three and day four. By this time, Chief Moya has left, he had to go on some sort of business trip, okay? Uh, Captain Moody is still gone. The cadets show up, there's some varying reports, but what we know is true is that the cadets show up and all of a sudden, now they're, they're being told that they need to work, work out with Captain Yokum, who's an active duty captain over the suppression crew at Maine. And so they go, they're, they're, they have to go out after lunch and work out with this crew. The reports vary. Some of the, some of the cadets say that they felt that they were being punished, that they had to do extra towers, with a tower run, which is up and down the tower over at the training fields that, that they practice hauling bodies up and down. Uh, some of them said that's not true. Captain Yokum said, anything we, that, that, that they did, we did with them. Uh, it's inconclusive. However, the, I, what is not inconclusive is that the cadets, uh, all, all the cadets saw that as a continuation of day one and day two in their mind, okay? Day four was a similar story. They were under the command of Captain Yokum again, they had to go work out with Captain Yokum again. Uh, and again, some of the cadets indicated that they were punished while they were out there and that the crew was mean to them. Again, it's a mixed bag, because some of them say they don't recall it that way, and then some of them say, and then the, uh, Captain Yokum says that, you know, anything that we asked them to do, or, you know, that, that we did with them. On the, on the fourth day, that would have been the nineteenth, August nineteenth, Chief, uh, Alvarez, who's been out of town, comes back. Uh, Captain Moody comes back. And bear in mind that none of these, none of these cadets reported this to anybody. And I asked why to each one of them, and they said, because, who do we report it to? We don't wanna get punished more, you know? It's just part of the deal. Um, and so they didn't report it to anybody. And then Captain Moody comes back, and about the same time that Captain Moody finds out about the, the blisters and starts inquiring into it, is about the same time that Chief Alvarez finds out. One of the people that we were, unfortunately, that was hurt the worst, uh, did not agree to participate in this, in, in this investigation. Um, Chief Alvarez saw his hands bandaged while he was making a cup of coffee and said, what happened on that Friday? Um, and that's, that's when their investigation began to start taking place, okay? I can find no indication from talking to the captains, the chiefs, or the cadets, that anybody with the city attorney's office, anybody with a city HR, anybody with the safety department, anybody, anybody outside the OFR was letting know about what went on, uh, over these four days until two or three weeks after. And the only way I know that that happened was we talked to the HR manager, um, and HR manager, Mr. Hurst, indicated that the first time that he ever heard about it was on a joint call between OFR Legal and HR, where, uh, the, the Chief Alvarez mentioned it in passing and said that he was handling the investigation, okay? So what did they do to investigate? The week after this event happened, they, they spoke to each one of the cadets and they spoke to each one of the captains. They took recorded statements of, of all of their, uh, all of their interviews. In my investigation, uh, neither HR nor OFR themselves had a complete copy of these, of these, uh, recorded statements. They didn't have any of the cadets recording statements. They had Captain Norred's, they had the captains and Chief Moya's. They had the three captains and Chief Moya's. That's all they had at OFR. So I can only go with what the cadets told me, which was that they were interviewed and that they gave their side of the story. They were also told in those interviews that, that the chief was gonna get to the bottom of it, this by, uh, Chief Ortega, okay? And that he was gonna report, uh, you know, back to them and let them know what happened. Every, every one of the cadets to a man reported to me that they didn't know what happened to the investigation. They didn't know if anybody got punished. And they were surprised, about half of them were surprised, that I was calling them to talk, because they thought the investigation had gone dead. They had no idea, okay? So what I am able to, uh, piece together by working with HR and then also OFR and getting some of the documents, we, we were able to uncover a couple of predisciplinary reports, one for Captain Norred and one for, for, uh, Chief Moya, okay? A predisciplinary report obvi- is, is basically what it says, which is prior to discipline, okay? And in talking to Chuck, to, to Charles Hirsch, um, these predisciplinary reports were submitted to HR. HR and Legal actually were both on the phone, uh, when they talked about their, the recommended punishment. And Mr. Hirsch i- indicated to me that both Legal and HR, um, disagreed vehemently with the punishment was, that was to be dished out. Nonetheless, they were told by Chief Alvarez, they would, they would take that under consideration, but handle it from there. So what happens at the end of the day? Chief Moya gets a five-day paid suspension. Captain Norred gets a, a formal written reprimand, okay? Which he contests and did contest, and that's not the subject of this hearing, but what I'm saying is, that's a result of, of the, of, of, of the, uh, punishment for, for injuring our cadets, okay? I think it bears saying again, and this is a problem, and this is why I said this is the start of what I've, of uncovered. No one, no one was told about this. No one outside of OFR for weeks. It was handled in-house. And, and I'm starting to see a little bit of a pattern that we'll get into later of a, a kind of a siloed approach between the departments of, of the city, where they're not using the resources that are, that are available to them, such as HR, such as, such as the city attorney, is this legal? Is this not legal? What should we do? How should we handle this investigation? Rather, the department heads are unilaterally taking it upon themselves, at least in this instance, to conduct an investigation and then maybe, maybe not tell people and, you know, just kind of wink, wink, nod, nod at everybody when they ask what happened. That's, you know, not proper, as y'all might imagine, you know? Uh, we've got departments, we've got a human resources department for a reason. We have a safety department that has a bunch of the heads of these departments, you know, that have a committee for a reason, for these kind of things, to prevent injuries to our, our, our workers. And, and I think that's probably the biggest point here is. Not only did the actions of, of the investigation that, that were never really made public to anybody within the city, not only is that a problem, the real problem is, this is a, these are injuries as a result of a direct order of a superior to a subordinate on the job. This, this represents, could represent, may still represent, I'm just gonna be honest with you guys. This may represent some liability to the city. I don't know that to be true or not true, but they were damaged on the job, they were hurt severely, they weren't asked, they weren't offered any kind of medical, uh, assistance whatsoever. None of them said that they got any kind of medical, uh, attention or were asked if they needed medical attention. Um, and this was kept from, from, from the city. So some of the other things that I found, and just to be fair, let's talk about what Captain Norred had to say. Uh, Captain Norred, uh, claims that he didn't, uh, he didn't have any animus, he wasn't trying to punish anybody. He says that he just, he really did just ask those kids to run. The problem with that is that the cadets and some of the other captains filled me in on some of the real character of, of Captain Norad. And not that it has anything to do with this accident, but there's a reason why everybody was upset with Captain Norad. And it's in my report. Just in my report, the cadets referenced, every one of them did. An, an instance with one particular cadet where, where Captain Norad screamed and yelled and berated at the cadet for showing up at a location where he was told by another captain to be, when Captain Norad really wanted him to be at another location. Okay, so he had conflicting orders. And he got berated and screamed at, uh, while he, he was the first one to arrive back to Captain Norad, uh, according to the order. And he was getting screamed at and berated and some of the other, some of the other cadets came up and he stopped. Another instance in this, in this very investigation during day two, when the, when the, when the hands were, you know, being, being burned. Uh, there was a, a certain cadet who was studying for his certification. The whole purpose of why we have the cadet program, he had a scheduled state certification exam at noon. All of this stuff is going on with Norad taking him off to run and then the chief, you know, getting him a PT gear. And Norad passes him in the hallway and says, why weren't you at my run? He said, well, I have a scheduled test, it's at twelve o'clock. He said, I don't care, you're going to make up your PT. You should have been there. Department comes first. Essentially, that's not what he, exactly what he said, but he berated this kid for, for, for uh being, sitting for a, a scheduled governmental test. And then finally, there is an instance that several of them, uh, related to me. There's a, a, a young cadet who, who's not great at English. That he, he, he made fun of on a couple of occasions about his pronunciation because his, his, his English isn't as good as Spanish is, is, is first language. So that's why, one of the findings that was found by the original investigation was that, um, that, that Captain Norad had, had been inappropriate with the cadets. Well, and that's part of the basis of his punishment. That's very true. The cadets seemed to think, and my inclination seems to be, or is, tends to be based on talking to all of these people, that although Captain Norad wants to absolve himself of the situation, um, he sure did run to Chief Moya to get those kids yelled at. And he sure as heck, the very next day went and asked, uh, asked those kids to go run in a, in a kind of a daring manner. That's the way they took it. Come, you want to come run with me? You know, kind of a, if you don't, you know what's going to happen, right? Kind of thing. That's the indication that these cadets told me. So essentially what, 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 what we have here is we have a siloed approach by the OFR where they took matters in their own hands and unilaterally did an investigation and did not involve any other department in the city. They, they meted out their own justice even after they had submitted the, the, the recommendations to HR and got HR s- a, a, opinion and objection to the lack of severity for the punishment to be issued. HR recommended that they both be terminated. Nonetheless, they overruled that objection and issued the punishment that they ultimately served, which was five days unpaid, um, five days unpaid for the chief and a written reprimand for Captain Norad. Now, from a practical and factual standpoint, these are problems too. There's no in- indication that the cadets, like I said before, were offered any medical treatment. That superiors with knowledge of the injuries reported the same in a timely manner to Chief Alvarez, Odessa Human Resources, the Safety Department, the City Attorney, or the City Manager. That the cadets were properly trained in how or where to report an injury or grievance, none of them knew. None of them knew. And that's something that, that I can get into more detail if you guys want by a supplement, uh, supplementary report. But the way they used to hire O- Odessa employees versus in what they were given and the instruction they were given and what, what it is now is drastically different. These kids were, were given about an hour's worth of orientation through the city and they're given another hour, maybe even less of orientation through, through the OFR. They weren't provided any materials until Captain Moody put together a book at all. And so they were not familiar, they weren't trained on, on who, you know, who to talk to, that the HR department was the place to go if they had a grievance or if they had an injury. And they're, they were, it was drilled into their head that if you have a problem, go to your superior, not go to HR. So, but when your superior is the one that does the problem and your head chief is out on vacation, where are these kids supposed to go? So there's also no indication that, um, that the cadets were adequately supervised, monitored, or trained, and that's a whole nother thing than, like I said. It's taken a while for me to get all this together is because there's so much to cover. There's a systematic problem in the cadet program. When you talk, when I talk to, to the three captains, they were unsure as to what they were supposed to be doing with the cadets on a day-to-day basis. Their main focus is outward looking at the active force. But they don't, they, they, Captain Norad indicated to me, and so did Captain Moody, that they would take ideas to Chief Moya and Chief Moya would either say, that sounds like a great idea, let's talk about it later, or we don't have the funding for it. And so as a result, these kids suffered and they sat in a room doing nothing all day long. So there is no evidence that they were radically supervised, monitored, or trained. There's no, you know, I didn't find any evidence that OFR coordinated with any other instrumentality within the city uh, to conduct the investigation in, into the injuries of the cadets or the action of its personnel. And, and I know it sounds like I'm beating a dead horse here, but that, that's, that's super important because that's why we have HR departments, that's why we have risk departments, that's why we have, you know, these, these, these claims departments and whatnot, to help and facilitate when there's a catastrophic injury or, or an injury to an employee such as this. And fi- and, and also there was no evidence that OFR provided a comprehensive report and findings of the investigation to HR, the City of Attorney, or City Manager. All we had were the predisciplinary reports. There was no final report, there was no cause analysis, there was no, none of that. And finally, that OFR, there was no evidence that the OFR or, and/or Chief Alvarez instituted any corrective measures, policies, or procedures to mitigate against recurrence. That's an important point too. These cad- these, these cadets were talked to the week after the incident and never talked to again. Never. And I asked the captains, I asked the chiefs, I asked the, I asked the cadets, did anything change? Did they come back and say, okay, we're going to do this different? Somebody's going to supervise you now. Or you report to him and him only and don't, don't report to this guy, or this policy, none, no changes. Just kept going like it normally, normally went. So my ultimate conclusion with respect to the, to the investigation that was conducted by OFR was that it was, it was incomplete and insufficient. I dare say, I question, I question the veracity of the report, uh, and, and I don't understand how in light of what I was able to uncover, and let's, let's be honest, this is why we do comprehensive reports and we bring people into the famili- uh, into the, into the mix when this happens. Is so that some lawyer doesn't have to come eight months later and point out all the deficiencies in a half, half, you know, when I only have half the information. I mean, what? Five cadets and five people just said, no, I'm not going to, I'm not going to participate. That's eleven people that I didn't get to talk to. And even without that, I, I found that there were serious, serious issues that were not covered by, by OFR and serious issues that still remain, well, remain un- uh, I guess unexplained. Uh, as to why, why the chiefs felt that it was, why Chief Alvarez and Chief Ortega felt that five days was sufficient uh, against HR's wishes and, and, and in the face of, of these blisters. So that's, that's my report for you guys and I have more, like I've told, I've told you earlier. There's lots of testimony that I was able to uncover from, from, uh, Mr. Hurst, as well as some of the captains about the day-to-day of how the, the, the OFR operates and some of the deficiencies, you know, and what they would expect that would make it better. And also, uh, you know, one of the big problems that, that, that we're facing here, guys, is, is I think HR also has been put in a box. In a, in a, in a traditional sense, you think of HR as being overarching where people, you know, can, can get some assistance if they have problems with their coworkers or subordinates. According to the rules on the books right now in the City of Odessa, they're hamstrung as an advisory situation only, only if they're asked. Only if they're asked by a department head can they, can they get involved. That's a real problem because it leads to situations like this where, uh, you know, captains and, I'm sorry, where department heads are kings of their own castle. Okay? So that's a whole nother, like I said, another issue that, that, that I'm going to cover in a supplemental report. So I just wanted to get, I know there's been a lot of question by the media and by the public and what are they doing, why are they doing this? This is why we did this. Because these pictures weren't anywhere, these came off of the cadets' phones. None of these pictures were in the possession of OFR or the City of Odessa or anywhere.
Mr. Sheen, what, what are we seeing here? Are we seeing blisters from friction? Are we seeing, or what, are we seeing, uh, uh, first degree, second degree burns?
We're seeing burns.
How did they receive the burns? By doing, uh, bear crawls, uh, pushups, or Indian runs?
It was over ninety degrees outside in the middle of August and they were on asphalt and concrete in the open sun while they were doing the bear crawls and so.
Did they stay for what duration of time?
However long it, it takes to, to crawl from the, from the base of the driveway to the top of the driveway at the main fire department three or four times.
O- over at Central, Mayor.
Over at Central.
Right there with the trucks pulled out, where all of this was done.
That's exactly what that is.
So that, that, those are burns. Um, they're not friction.
I, I know this is a presentation and the findings, uh, so I'm going to refer to our interim city attorney. Is there any questions that we can ask in the report?
Mayor, this, this is something that is important. I, I, I don't see a problem with you asking a few questions. I just would not get too heavily into it.
Okay, so the, in, in the report, there's really just on page, on page nine, on the bottom, you referred to HR, HR objected to suspension of Chief, Chief Moya.
Yes.
And recommended, and recommended termination.
That's correct.
So this co- this came from our HR department based on the evidence that they had.
This came from the word, the direct words of Charles Hurst, who was involved in the conversation, where he said, we don't believe that your punishment fits the injury. We think that this is severe enough to where there needs to be some terminations, or at least that Chief Moya needs to be removed from a supervisory role. And the, the reaction that he got from Chief Alvarez was, we'll take that under advisement.
Okay, and that's why later on you stay.
Now, this is according to, to, to Charles Hurst.
Yes.
Okay?
So this is why on page ten of ten, on item seven, OFR or Chief Alvarez instituted any corrective measures, policies, procedures, and mitigated against a recurrent. So basically, in the, in, in this report, you're basically saying is that there was with the that the punishment was crafted for Moya, but was ignored of what HR was saying.
No, what I'm saying is the crafted, the, the punishment was crafted by Chief Ortega and Chief Alvarez without consultation with anybody.
Okay.
And when they, but they did submit predisciplinary reports to HR and Legal. And once they looked at those, HR and Legal both, according to Ch- to Charles, said, that's not sufficient.
Hey, according to the media, there was a thorough investigation and it was done twice.
Right.
And that it was mitigated and it was hammered in a thousand-word essay supposedly. And so what we're seeing in here is that that wasn't the case. Further goes on to at least re- uh, at the ve- at the very least removal from supervisory role, that didn't occur either.
That is correct.
So one, the recommendation from HR was, we recommend termination, that was ignored. Then at the very least, to be demoted and that didn't occur.
That is correct.
What did occur was a five-day suspension.
That is correct.
Okay, then it went on that HR objected to the reprimand of Captain Norad and recommended termination. Now, in this report, Mr. Norad basically says that he wasn't involved in any of the dis- uh, uh, of the disciplinary action of the cadets. But the thing is, is that HR recommended a severe, uh, termination.
Correct.
Do you have, did Mr. Hurst say why?
Based on the fact that they had had, I guess, informal reports, I guess, of other instances as well as, at least from what they were able to gather, which wasn't much, the cadets' main cons- uh, complaint was that Captain Norad orchestrated this whole thing.
Was it the, the conductor?
Yes. That was their, their complaint. That's what the cadets said.
Okay, the five cadets.
Yeah, but eight cadets.
Eight cadets, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, um, so overall, the thing is, what I find standing is that what you found is very little to no documentation of a very severe incident.
That's correct.
Also, that there was no training for the cadets to be able to not only report what was going on, but had, no one had no idea who to report.
That is correct.
Not even Moody.
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, I take that back. They were, they were told that you, if you have a problem, to talk to your supervisor. The problem was Moody was gone, the head chief was gone. And the, the training chief was the one that inst- instituted the, the problems. So the guy below and the guy above, the man that, that, that caused the problems were both gone. So they had nowhere, they, they didn't know where they were supposed to go at that point.
But the overall umbrella around here was the cadets still feared retribution even if they did.
What's that?
They still feel retribution, even, even if they did report it, they felt there was a retribution, so in best, best cases, they did not.
That is correct. They, they, each one of them confirmed to a man that they knew better than to say anything because they didn't want to get punished more.
So in the all, if they were not reporting to anybody, how did this come alive? How did this come to light?
I'm, I'm not certain how it came to light, other than I got contacted by the city attorney's office. You know, that's, that's how I, I learned about it.
Okay. Just wondering if your investigation, or you would find out how this came to light because if they were too afraid to report it to their supervisors.
Right, well, I'm not.
Or, or did it come into light on August twenty-second in a call between Chief, HR, and Legal? Where they was in passing and it mentioned that an incident occurred and they were taken care of internally.
As far as the city is concerned, that was the first notice that they had of any kind of situation.
Okay.
And it wasn't an exact date that was given to me. Uh, Mr. Hurst said it was in late August. Well, this incident happened August sixteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth, and it was some week or longer after that. It was my understanding that they were already well within, in, into the investig- the internal investigation at that point. Or it started it at least, because they started that internal event, they started interviewing cadets that Monday and, and, and some of the officers that Monday after.
Okay.
Tommy, do you know how many of the cadets left because of this?
At least two. At least two.
Were those the worst ones?
Huh?
Those were the worst ones?
One of them was. Yeah, one of them was, the, the one that was hurt the most, that I wanted to talk to the most. He, he would not, he didn't want anything to do with this. He was very, very upset and didn't want anything to do with it. And his are the worst blisters and see if I can pull them out. I think maybe on that page one, but I think, yeah, that, those are his, I believe, the two big ones. So, no, so he, he would, he, he didn't want to talk to me. So, um, I know that some, uh, some of the cadets that are no longer with the, with the force came in voluntarily because they wanted to tell what happened to them while they were here. And a few of them said it wasn't specifically this instance, but this plus things that kept occurring that led them to, that led them to leave. A couple left because they couldn't pass the test, but a few of them left because of, of continued issues with, with some of these, some of these actors. So.
It's Captain Norad still employed and he's still in that, in the same position, the OFR?
It's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay.
But I, I'm not, I don't know, I talked to him over a month or so ago. I, I understand that he's put in for a promotion somewhere.
Oh, great.
But I don't know, uh, Chief Cotton would be a better, better source for where Captain Norad is at this current juncture, I'm not sure.
Yeah, right now, we're just talking about what's present right here. Um, Counsel, do we have any other questions pertaining to this presentation and findings? That to absorb?
Yeah, I, I have a lot of words to say, but I'd better not say them up here right now.
I, I plan and I've, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, is, is there anything else you want to add?
Yes, uh, I will be submitting a supplemental report, um, that has to do with, uh, some of the pol- some of the policy problems that the that the captains and HR both identified, uh, as well as some of the recommendations by the cadets themselves on how to be, how to be a better cadet program. Um, and also some of the, uh, I don't, I don't mind saying this because this is what my report's gonna say, the systematic breakdown from the top of of OFR. It is just really, as far as the cadet, the cadet program is concerned, it was the hot potato nobody wanted to mess with. So, um.
Mr. Sheen, I thank you for that report.
Thank you. No problem, thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to item eleven, discuss and consider posting city attorney's job position using T-two professional consulting counsel. Put this on on the agenda. It says counsel, so.
Yeah, I would like to, um, actually just make a motion to fill that position with Dan Jones. He's done an excellent job. And I don't see there, there's any reason to go through T-two professional consultant when he's already doing a good job with this and I don't believe that we need to search.
I second this.
Counsel, we have a motion and second. Counsel, do we have any discussion on this item?
If we were to go still with T-two professional consulting, that's, how much, how much of a delay would that be and what would be the cost of that? I mean, do we have that? I mean, that, are we just gonna be spending money that doesn't need to be spent really?
Well, he he, the question is this, is it? I don't think that we ever discussed it with T-two. I don't think there's a parameter of what we would want to do with that within itself. They could then leave post and then moving on. Uh, but those are, those are, those are cu- uh, conversations we have to have, uh, in order if we are gonna do that. This counsel, uh, has this item on the agenda to discuss and consider posting city attorney's job. So we have a motion and second, uh, about, I guess, we're talking about lifting the interim?
Yes.
Okay, and so counsel, do we have any discussion on that item?
Now I feel very comfortable with it because I know the man.
I've been satisfied with the work.
I have no issues with that motion.
No, I think Dan's done a good job. He's done, uh, he's done everything I've asked for and he's been timely and always available. So I think he probably deserves it.
No, don't say that. You're gonna say this?
I didn't say any about races. Maybe a cut.
Let me, let me just ask Mr. Jones some questions very quickly. Uh, how long have you been with the city?
Now's the time for interrogation.
Uh, I've been with the city over four years. In fact, Darryl Wales created this job for me, the, when I was senior assistant city attorney. Uh, I, he imported me from Mississippi, as it were. Uh, and so the job was created by Darryl. And so Darryl basically funded my salary, uh, with, from RISD. And, uh, that's how I came here. But be- but before that, I actually served as a district attorney in, for six years in Mississippi. Uh, was actually school board attorney for several years and was actually a city attorney for a little municipality called the town of New Hebron.
I'm glad you gave me all that backup, background experience. Lawyers have a tendency to specialize in certain areas. Are you like a municipality law person?
This is pretty much what I've always done, is municipal work, um, in the public sector law is what I've done.
Okay.
In some, in some form or fashion.
I'm in agreement with the, uh, motion and the, uh, discussion. We can't go there yet. I haven't called for a vote, so I won't recognize that. Okay. Counsel, any other further discussion? Seeing that there's no further discussion on item eleven, we have a motion on item eleven to remove the interim tag on, uh, interim city attorney Dan Jones to city attorney Dan Jones. And we have a motion by council member Swanner, second by council member Cornell. Am I correct? Haney?
It's a tie again.
Okay, I'm gonna give it to Haney. He's been fighting all night long. He's been coming in third, so I have a motion by council member Swanner. A second by council member Haney. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mayor.
Congratulations.
I will continue to work hard for all of you and of course, anything you need, we will do.
Just look forward for the op-ed tomorrow.
Oh, that that'll be fun. That'll be good. I li- I like to make the paper.
So we're gonna wind up going to item twelve, consider appointing replacing, replacement for Hal Feldman on the Ector County Odessa Joint Airport Zoning Board. They can see as needed to be filled on the board. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, uh, I received an email from, uh, Hal Feldman. He is resigning, of course. I think he's taking a job in Tucson, Arizona. Therefore, we need to appoint his replacement tonight.
Counsel, uh, consider the.
And Mr. Connell, of course, serves on the Jazzbee.
Well, that's, uh, the airport's in his district.
Yes, he he serves on it.
So we wind up handing out, because it was a recommendation, and we wind up putting a, an employee. Okay, so counsel, do we need, do we have a discussion on that item? Do we want to continue with someone on the council? Do we want to do an employee? Do we want to volunteer to anybody from the crowd? Uh, how do we want to proceed?
And Mayor, it can be anybody. Anyone you want, another council member, it can be another employee. It can be, uh, John Smith off the street, whoever you can talk in that's crazy enough to do it.
You said that, I didn't.
I I make a recommendation to, um, appoint, uh, Councilwoman Swanner on this, since she's at large position.
Don't you love Mark?
Did you just say crazy?
Crazy enough to do it. Are you crazy enough to do it?
Sure, why not?
You know, since she's at large, you're not saying no. I'll second that motion before she changes her mind. So we have a, a motion by council member Ma- uh, Mata to appoint Denise Swanner, council member at large, to the, uh, Ector County Odessa Joint Airport Zoning Board, seconded by the mayor. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay.
Congratulations.
Motion passed unanimously. Good luck. You're gonna be dealing with a county. Uh, we're gonna move on to item thirteen, appointment of boards, uh, animal, um, Mr. Grumondo, I'm sorry.
No, sir, we don't have any boards.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item fourteen, executive session.
Mayor, I, Mayor, I don't. See Keith Stretcher here or Aaron Dorfner. They were supposed to be here.
So we're gonna wind up, uh, do we table the item or do we just?
Uh, we can table it.
Okay. For this contract? Yeah, what's the deal? Yeah.
Oh, that that was just for links. The, I just wanted y'all to see it. It wasn't in the packet, so I just wanted y'all to have it. No, and yeah, that's why I gave it to y'all. That's all.
Well, since, since you're not here and not gonna make a presentation, do we, do we need to table it or we just move on?
I would just table it.
Okay.
And we can come back, pick it up in a couple of weeks.
So I will consider a motion on item fourteen to table the executive session. I have a motion by council member Mata, second by council member Thompson, all in favor to table item fourteen, all in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion fourteen, the motion is tabled, item fourteen is tabled to, uh, two weeks. Seeing that there is no more business before the city council on item fifteen, I will entertain a motion for adjournment by council member.
Same here.
Swanner, second by council member Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passed unanimously. We are adjourned. Be careful going home. Bless you. I'm sorry.
Thank you. With Ford working with you, more.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, sir.